Together on that, but I will just say that of course you can help us clean up cigarette butts. Maybe one day if you invite me, I'll go out there and do it with you. But the most important thing is that you are supporting our community and we all, you got more than you bargained for here. You got an entire council meeting. But we appreciate everything you're doing and obviously, you know, if there's a way to get that presentation, Hazel Anne, if you can send me that, that would be great so I can see again and process it more. And you're welcome to stay for the meeting. I know a lot of you have homework, not too much homework at Edger School, right? A little bit. A lot of homework? Okay. Well, you're welcome to stay for this meeting. It's gonna be a very interesting one. There's a lot more people here than usual to hear it, but you also can go home and do your homework and that's up to you and your parents, okay? Thanks for coming. Thank you. Good job, girls. I was gonna say, there's some solid seats that were taken earlier in the front if anybody's interested. You're right. Anyone? Going once? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 3rd, 2025, Meeting of the Metuchen Borough Council. Adequate notice this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law 1975, Chapter 231. Said notice was published in the Home News Tribune on December 18th, 2024, Posted in Borough Hall and filed in the Clerk's Office. All requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Before we do the flag salute, are there any of the Girl Scouts that want to lead us in the flag salute? It's up to you. I see a hand. We're good. We got at least one. Come up to the front. Come up to the front. Come on. It's okay. Yep. Anyone who wants to join us. Girl Scouts only. Girl Scouts only.
I was gonna say, Almo Smano raises hands.
Girl Scouts only. Only those who are comfortable. And siblings. Girl Scouts and siblings. Okay, okay. Good rule followers here. Wait. Wait for your sister. You're good? Okay. And you're facing the flag over here. Right? Ready? When you're ready.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Okay, roll call, please. Ms. Supan?
Councilmember Branch?
Here.
Councilmember Jamboy?
Here.
Councilmember Hyman?
Here.
Councilmember Jethwani?
Here.
Councilmember Candell?
Here.
Council President Gillia?
Here.
Mayor Bush?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion or take a motion to open the agenda session.
I'd like to make that motion to open the agenda session.
There's been a motion from the council president. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Do we have any items for the agenda session?
Not today.
Not today? Council members, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the agenda session?
I make a motion to close the agenda session.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda session's closed and we have some very special guests with us tonight. This is typically when we have our public comment, but we're gonna, we're gonna reserve our public comment for after the presentation. I know most people are probably here to listen to the presentation, but of course, the public comment will be on both the presentation or not the presentation, whatever might be on your mind. You'll be free to address the council at that time. But at this point, I'm going to invite Jim Constantine from our planners, L R K, as well as Chris Palladino from Devco to present to the borough. And there's a microphone right here if you want to hold it. Yes. There you go.
Stand here under the image so I can look at council.
And I could just, before you start, if I can, and Jim Constantine has been our planner for many, many years. Many of us sitting up here and many of you in the audience, if you haven't lived here your whole life, there's a good chance, or for a very, very, very long time, there's a good chance that you moved here in part because of the vision of Jim Constantine. He and his staff over the years, Chris Cosenza obviously works with Jim and used to be a borough employee, sometimes still is actually a borough employee, contractor. Jim has been instrumental in moving Metuchen forward. A lot of what we have attracted us, attracted us here is from Jim and his vision and we appreciate. So it's wonderful that you're still with us. You're very accomplished in your career and the fact that you're able to come home back to Metuchen where you lived at one point on Main Street, I think in 1985, is that right?
Correct.
Main Street looked a lot different then?
Pioneering in 1985.
Well, welcome back. And you're always welcome back here and we appreciate that you're back for this incredibly important project that'll take us to the next generation.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And Metuchen is my adopted hometown. I say that to everybody. I have for 40 years. Well, first, I'd like to thank the almost 250 citizens who came out in late January to tour our information sessions to get information, ask questions, and provide input on the Metuchen Arts District. It is a very, very exciting project. In 2018, armed with a $3.5 million grant from Middlesex County, the Borough acquired the Forum Theater. That allowed us to ensure that the Forum would continue as a community landmark into the future, but it also then created the real work that began to, how do we revitalize and re-envision the Forum and do it in an economically viable way? The acquisition of the theater has evolved into a broader plan for the Metuchen Arts District that will enhance our town's cultural vibrancy and quality of life. Envisioning an arts district involves strategic goals and objectives, more than just a theater. So how can we create synergy with the downtown? And there's lots of studies to show that the local business community generates all sorts of benefits economically from the effects of arts and culture if it's programmed and planned properly. How can we serve a need in the regional marketplace, which is sort of jammed up with a lot of competing arts and culture venues? And then how do we properly plan and pay for it? And that gets to the partnering, the financing, the funding, and Chris Palladino from Devco is going to speak a lot to that in a little bit. Arts-related projects are complex and they're challenging and they do require special expertise and a solid business plan for success. And to bring the Forum back to life, the Borough has brought on both the state of New Jersey and Middlesex County and selected Devco to be our official redeveloper for this important project. Devco is a private nonprofit corporation that was originally established to revitalize New Brunswick. Since then, they've gone on to work throughout the county and throughout the state of New Jersey. Their impressive track record has developed over $3.5 million in public-private partnership initiatives, including the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center, which you see pictured on the screen. At the community open houses in January, the public had an opportunity to meet our partners at Devco, the Economic Development Authority of the State of New Jersey and Middlesex County. And in true Metuchen fashion, citizens gave us their input. We are now gonna share a video that has some highlights of those sessions in January. The Borough acquired the Forum Theater in 2019 to preserve it as a historic, cultural, significant landmark and to ensure its future as a cornerstone of the community. We received a $3.5 million grant from Middlesex County. It covered the purchase price and allowed the Borough to take ownership and begin the real work of beginning to plan how to revitalize, re-envision the theater and make sure it's done in an economically viable way. This acquisition of the theater has evolved into a broader plan to create the Metuchen Arts District, a place that will enhance the town's cultural vibrancy and quality of life, not just for residents, but for the region and ensure that the Forum remains a vital part of the community for future generations. Arts-related projects are complex and challenging. They require special expertise, vision, strategy, collaboration, and a solid business plan to be successful. In looking at the Forum, bringing it back to life, the Borough has brought in specialized expertise. We have some consultants. We also designated Devco as the official redeveloper for this vital project. As a private nonprofit corporation, they were originally established to revitalize New Brunswick. They've gone on to work throughout Middlesex County and throughout the state of New Jersey. The theater was built on this site almost 100 years ago in 1928. It was a simple theater when it was built. Today, the Forum Theater itself is in a significant state of disrepair, including visible cracking to the exterior walls and foundation. There's other deteriorating conditions. There's significant damage to the beloved marquee. Inside the Forum Theater, there are various unsafe conditions related to the foundation, the slab, the floor system, outdated facilities that are not accessible, does not fit today's needs, doesn't meet code in a lot of ways. And finally, there's significant structural issues related to the roof. There's a large crack in the floor. It's a little hard to see there that it's loaded with problems. The Borough acquired the Forum itself in 2019 with a commitment to preserve its legacy as a theater. Meanwhile, across Main Street, we witnessed the loss of several historic Victorian-era buildings. And that began us thinking about a broader concept for the Metuchen Arts District to begin to encompass some of the area surrounding it as well. Down Amboy, down Main, and all the way over to Halsey Street. But we really see that there's a chance to bring the Halsey Street lot in as part of this thinking more broadly and master planning. So looking at the entire area, looking at it as an arts district, not just a theater itself. So the vision is really focused on reactivating the theater as an anchor for hosting various types of performances, special events, educational programs, other types of events, and thinking ahead, imagining new activities that couldn't be accommodated within the space and the constraints of the existing theater. From concerts, dance performances and comedy shows, standing room gatherings where the space may be able to flex and have different types of seating and floor configurations, new uses that will help ensure that the Forum's economic viability and relevance will remain for future generations. And beyond the theater, we have an amazing opportunity to create an entire neighborhood and really foster something that might be different. Imagine having a hub of creative folks that live as artists and residents, something that's not here in the community today. So in order to do so at this larger scale, we needed a partner. And that's where Devco comes in, along with Middlesex County and the state of New Jersey. So there, and all of these groups are represented here this evening. It's really part of us forming a very strong public-private partnership and having all levels of government here working together. We have an opportunity to rebuild the theater the way we remember it, or maybe even better than it was. And it's critical that we can recapture the original spirit. We want to make sure this is a transformative project that revitalizes the soul of the theater, reimagines the Forum Theater, but can accommodate a wider range of activities that are needed in the community to have no home now. So please go interact, have fun, ask questions, get your answers, most importantly. Give us your input and I encourage you to imagine what if. Thank you.
I'm really excited. I'm a 20-year resident of Metuchen and I love that it will be a multi-use space, not only a theater, but an event space. It's a, in a place for community to come together and to have opportunities to do art shows and other events.
I think the thing that's really important as well is really thinking about the revenue it's gonna take to maintain this infrastructure. So we have to be mindful of business model as well as also community engagement. I believe in Metuchen. I believe Metuchen can make it happen.
It's a good story. I'd like to see a little bit more studio space in that.
To know that there is a lot of planning that's being done around setting up, you know, this whole district to be our center is really a super exciting thing for us. And also, I happen to live in the south part of town, so it's also very accessible to us personally, very selfishly. But just in general, I think it's gonna be really fun to be set up, see it.
I thought it should be maybe more in line with community theater, which kind of feels that way. It kind of feels intimate and it looks nice. You know, so I think it's, I think it's gonna be great.
All the two, like everybody wants to keep some form of the Forum alive, which I think is important to the community and the region. But I'm excited. I think it's gonna be exciting for the town. I think it's gonna bring business to the town, bring more money to the town and I think it's just gonna be great overall.
So for nearly a century, we've had a simple theater. The Forum was never what was at the time called a movie palace or a grand vaudeville theater. It was located as a standalone attraction and a few blocks out of downtown and really didn't have any great relationship with surrounding businesses or the business district. When we acquired the theater, our goal was to preserve its legacy and protect it from a third party repurposing the theater for something that we didn't want to see. We had our eyes wide open and knew it had, was in a significant state of disrepair. There's structural damage that creates unsafe conditions. It's not accessible. Someone in a wheelchair can't access or use the bathrooms. The structure is not code compliant in numerous ways. So we started with the premise of renovating the existing theater as the next act for the Forum. This was option one. In using funding provided by Middlesex County's Cultural and Arts Trust Fund, the Borough retained a consultant who specializes in theaters to study the existing conditions, generate costs and estimates for renovation, and provide a realistic scenario how it might be reused. What we found was that there were no cost savings to renovate versus new construction, that correcting structural damage and deficiencies was going to create a certain amount of that cost. Substantial code issues had to be addressed for accessibility and we had severe seating, reduced seating capacity to reuse within the existing space. There would be less than half of the current seating capacity remaining. And the theater cannot accommodate with its fixed seats a wider range, a spectrum of entertainment, cultural and social programming. So the consultant identified this programming inflexibility as one of the greatest constraints to the existing theater. So this led to option two, reconstructing the theater into what is known as a black box to optimize flexibility and viability. The theater consultant found that reconstruction provided the following benefits. Be similar cost as renovation. The cost to correct damage and structural deficiencies is now reallocated to the facility itself, which can come features and finishes that people can experience. It would be fully accessible. There would be flexible seating, capacity configurations, and there would be a flexibility to accommodate this wider spectrum of programming. So there is an opportunity to design a new theater that feels like the original Forum, but has this ability to have all sorts of flexible seating arrangements for a variety of the performing arts within it. And most importantly, because we can go flat surface, we can actually accommodate a whole variety of standing room gatherings, conventions, banquets, the wedding, the weddings that we can't host in town any longer. All these uses that give the Forum greater viability and purpose and relevance for the community because there are all these things that can occur there other than just using it for a theater. The area that's outlined in the dashed yellow here lines represents what we've labeled the larger Metuchen Arts District. And it's really meant to evolve over what could take more than a decade. This includes the buildings across, the Victorian buildings that we've lost across Main Street and those properties there and then down to the Halsey Street Lot. And we're several years into the process of really analyzing and planning for the repurpose, reuse and transformation of the theater, but also thinking about how it could relate to the surrounding area. And tonight, we're focused on what we're calling Phase One, of which the centerpiece is the reconstructed Forum Theater that will really serve as this arts activity anchor for the arts district. And in parallel, the Borough has begun the process to acquire the former gas station property adjacent to the theater, which has been abandoned for some time. I'm gonna turn it over now to Chris Palladino from Devco, who's gonna walk you through a plan for the reconstruction, including costs, funding sources and a strategy to sustainably subsidize the ongoing operations of the theater.
Thank you, Jim. Mayor?
Does that work?
It's on.
Hello?
It works.
Pick it out. Pick it out like Phil Donahue. Okay, there you go.
All right. Perfect. So Mayor Bush, members of council, thank you for the opportunity for us to come in and be able to sum up some of the work that we've done with your team, with Jim's team, and hopefully moving this project forward. I certainly need to commend the mayor and the council for the process. It's been a while since I've been through such a public process, particularly the two evenings that we spent at the middle school. You know, those evenings are illustrative of the fact that the arts can foster cooperative dialogue and bring about solutions for change and open doors to various opportunities. I think we learned much more of those evenings than we were able to kind of explain to people. It's clear that the arts drive strong social networks here in Metuchen and community cohesion. Higher empathy and certainly community pride in this borough. When we accepted this assignment, and I think we may have accepted it twice. I think we were a consultant early on and then second, as redeveloper. We essentially saw the scope of our challenge to be four parts. Number one, to design a theater project that was viable, constructable, affordable and flexible. Second, develop a capital spec, a financial structure that did not burden the success of the reinvented Forum Theater with debt, nor putting any debt on the taxpayers and the Borough of Metuchen. And third, even the most successful venues in the world cannot sustain operations on ticket sales, rental income concessions. So we needed to identify a resource that will generate a revenue stream that will help sustain operations of the theater for the next several decades. And we also had to keep in mind that we had to continue to maintain commuter parking and parking for the new arts district. So first, the construction. And Jim has done a very good job of talking about the existing Forum Theater. Just want to point out two things. If we were to reconstruct and renovate that existing theater, it probably, most likely, and I think we did several iterations of this, would cost more than actually building new construction. Second most important thing in this is that the theater today is about 8,600 square feet and the theater which we are proposing to be the new reimagined Forum Theater is about 21,000 square feet. Gives you a lot more opportunity to do things, you know. And code is probably the biggest important thing is that the bathrooms and to be able to, although getting in and out of here's not the easiest thing. We actually took the opportunity to sit in those dusty seats in the Forum Theater and people were probably a lot smaller when they built them. Our structural engineers concluded that it really didn't make any sense and the building was actually dangerous in large part. So the new, the new reimagined theater will have a proscenium stage, theatrical lighting and professional sound system, a digital cinema system, so you can bring back movies again to the Forum. Stadium seating for 388 members of the audience. Flat four event seating for 500, although we do want to talk about maybe allowing that to be 600. That's by adding another exit to the building. Banquet seating for 340 to 350 people. Storage space, which is critical in a theater. Dressing rooms, operations offices, restrooms and concessions. As I indicated, this new building will be twice as large as the first building, but basically sit in the same footprint. We bump it out a little here. We add a second floor. We have to put obviously vertical transportation that doesn't exist today. Hardcore estimate is about $927 per square foot to build a building like this. We, in the last couple of years, well, not me, Marissa, built the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center where we built a 450-seat theater and a 320-seat theater. At least once a month when we're working on this project, she reminds me how much she would have liked to have the flat floor option that we're recommending here. It's probably one of the real reasons that we kind of pursued that to allow us to do things that we can't do in New Brunswick. But this is very consistent with the pricing that we had for that project. The total cost is approximately $30 million. Let's hope tariffs don't impact us all that much. And we anticipate, once we get rolling, a construction schedule of about 18 months to, from when we break ground to when we open the doors. So how do we pay for it? The Borough has $3 million that I believe it was the 2023 state budget, which will be part of the capital stack. And fortunately, and I'm not saying it was developed for this project, but certainly in partnership with this project, the New Jersey Economic Development Authority, who we have worked with, we probably in the last two years have done about $300 million worth of tax credits with the E D A, developed a program to actually help cultural arts facilities. And this in large part for the mayor, from the mayor really working, you know, contacts and bringing people to the theater and seeing what is possible and how important it was. In fact, when this program was announced, it was announced at the Forum Theater with the governor. Kind of shows you how, how much influence we, that Metuchen had in the development of this program. And that program is going to get us, we have a $30 million project. Our eligible cost is about $29 million. We sell the tax credits to Citibank or Johnson &amp; Johnson or to somebody at 90 cents a piece and it gets us approximately $22 million in cash that we can put into the capital stack. So we take the $3 million, we take the $22 million. We have 25 million of the 30 that we need, so we're looking for $5 million more. So just to go back to our four challenges, we have designed what we believe is a flexible, buildable, constructable space. So now we need to find that cap part of the capital stack that doesn't burden the project and probably most importantly, the taxpayers of Metuchen. We need to identify a resource that provides an operating subsidy for the project long term and that we need a way to not only maintain, but potentially expand parking opportunities in the arts, for the entire arts district. You only get to do this once. You've got some credible opportunities to do things in this neighborhood and you don't want to build more parking lots. So if we can solve the parking problem in a walkable neighborhood from day one, it really is gonna help the work that you're gonna do at the spot or in the Victorian home neighborhood and some of the other areas that you have. We have often leveraged multiple projects for the benefit of one another, particularly in the work that we've done in New Brunswick. For example, we monetized property taxes from the residential units that we built above the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center and used it to help pay for the two theaters. We also took a portion of the residential tax credit program. There was not a cafe program in those days. And we stripped it out and we used it to fill a hole in the Performing Arts Center component of the building. So we've kind of looked at this. So we looked at the Halsey Street Lot as a potential opportunity. Given what we needed to try to accomplish, we looked very quickly at, we looked at, you know, flex, light manufacturing, small warehousing space that wasn't gonna get us there. We looked at traditional office space, although most of you appreciate that there's kind of a flood of that, particularly in Middlesex County at the moment. We looked at a standalone parking structure and how the economics of that would work on this. And we also looked at a mixed-use project that would have varying types of residential product and a parking. residential product and a parking garage, all as part of a mixed-use project. Only the third option really gave us the financial opportunity to accomplish what we set out to accomplish. So we're confident that, talking to a number of partners, that we could develop a residential community that reflects Metuchen's priorities, and I believe that Jim's going to talk about some of those different priorities in this in a little while, including, one of the things that I heard over and over again, not just rental units, but the potential for for-sale units of some type, and kind of creating some type of streetscape around that building. Our goal is to develop a final package that makes available a funding package to the borough at a minimum of $20 million. $5 million in cash that'll be utilized to fill the gap in the Forum budget, a 270-car parking facility that will be deeded to the borough at no cost, and that would allow the borough to direct somewhere in the neighborhood $250,000 to $300,000 a year in cash flow to subsidize the operations of the Forum Theater. So those are the basics, that's the bones. We have more work to do, give details, but we believe that there is a structure here that gets you an extraordinary theater. And while Jim said that they're competing interests, I don't believe, except for the project that we run in New Brunswick, some of the other theaters that are built, this will be really, really, an extraordinary facility that I think meets all of the use, potential uses that we heard in those two nights. Everything from dance recitals to stand-up comics to poetry readings to art shows to banquets. I think you're going to have an extraordinary facility, in a very walkable place, you know, to be able to come in from the train to see some, to see a show, or to walk back and forth into downtown. I mean, one of the things that we found in New Brunswick, it's not just tax revenue that's generated, but, you know, the amount of business that happens in the downtown, parking revenue, people going have a drink, ice cream, whatever, after dinner. I think we have some real opportunity to pull this together and let it to be the first piece of what could be one of probably the best total arts districts in New Jersey. So, thank you.
So in summary, Phase One consists of reconstructing the theater, acquiring the former gas station, and then on the Halsey Street Lot, as Chris just described, the residences of the Forum, which are meant to be a range of housing types addressing some of the community needs. First, there'll be a 20% set aside for affordable housing, which is critical for every community in New Jersey. This also includes a portion of the affordable housing reserved with a preference for special needs residents, where they will remain housed and engaged right in the heart of the community. Another portion of the housing will be reserved for a veterans preference located ideally adjacent to the American Legion Hall. And there will also be an effort to attract artists as well. We want to really foster creativity throughout the arts district, and so this idea of having this play, work, live hub for local artists and residents will be something that we'll try to do to, again, diversify the local economy, the downtown, and the entire community. Phase Two will be focused on arts-related uses on the site of the former gas station adjacent to the theater. This is also intended to foster creativity, and we heard a lot of great ideas during the workshop for things that people also want to see included in the arts district beyond just a theater. And this includes all sorts of art spaces, studio for galleries, exhibit space, flex space, recreation and entertainment, unique food and beverage uses, maybe food and beverage and fun, which we know attracts all ages, and uses activities that would complement the downtown. And so a lot of these ideas that we heard from citizens, we believe can nest and come home on the, adjacent to the theater in the former gas station site. Next, please. Which has been sitting really as a vacant corner for way too long, at a key gateway to the downtown. So the preliminary vision is to really take a cue from some things that used to be here previously. So just in the plan view that you see, there is the new expanded Forum Theater in Brown on the left, and again, that's sitting just a little bit larger than the current footprint. There's the former gas station to the right, which looks like that on the bottom today. What used to be there some time ago, you see pictured on the bottom from a 1948 photo, was called The Spot. It was this classic roadside service station from the early part of the 20th century in a mission revival style, barrel vaulted tile roof on it, and it was called The Spot. You can see the name there, right in the center, just beyond the gas tanks. And in that amazing photo from then-Senator John F. Kennedy campaigning for the presidency in 1960, you can see turning the corner of Amboy and Main, The Spot in the background over then-Senator Kennedy's shoulders. So when we look at that architecturally, The Spot, what you see on the plan in purple are arts-related uses, and The Spot reconstructed and pulled a little closer to the corner, which might contain a whole variety of the things that we heard people talking about, but I think particular variety of different food and beverage uses, some of these other spaces, perhaps rehearsal and other exhibition space that may occur on the ground level. And just imagine that this vacant corner, as Phase Two, is transformed with The Spot, designed like the historic gas station, pulled up, other buildings that would sort of fill it in. And if you think about this from a, kind of a long-term historic timeline, we're actually restoring more of the flavor and the character of what was there historically than certainly what we have today. And so this would provide all of the sorts of, many of the additional things, as Chris alluded, will allow us to start to energize this place as an arts district with all sorts of creative spaces to exhibit, rehearse, dream, have food, fun, and entertainment, and also provide things that are available for Metuchen residents on a daily basis. I think The Spot and the uses that are there will be things that'll be visited on a more regular basis, because they won't require you going to a performance or an exhibit or an event at the Forum. So with that, there we have our Metuchen Arts District Phases One and Two. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that very informative presentation. I mean, I'm obviously privy to a lot of this in advance, but not all the council members have been, I don't think any of the council members actually have been, and I know that the community hasn't certainly. And I just really appreciate the hard work of our professionals, because this has been a lot of work behind the scenes, because you can't yet go to the public until you have something to present. So obviously, before we turn this over to the community for comment, I would like to ask our council members if they have any questions or comments.
As far as the flexible seating, what kind of seating would work there? I mean, what types of chairs would we be talking about that could be flexible?
So...
She used a microphone.
Yeah. We have done a lot of research, and both our architect and our theater designer. I hate to use this as an example, but you think about what they do, like in the high school gymnasium, where they come out of the wall, but when they come up, they actually have a cushioned seat with arms in it. So it disappears, but they're quite comfortable, because we've actually gone and sat in them. But it allows you to actually have a flat floor. When we wanted to do this in New Brunswick, at that point, we didn't have the, we didn't have the space to do it, the depth of the building, and we were going to have to try to do it hydraulically. But this is, there's several theaters that have done this, and it's quite comfortable and flexible. And then, once you have a flat floor, now it's open to do all kinds of things. You can do a standing concert, you could do a seminar, you could do a meeting. The critical thing here is, and I think we've got enough, that's one of those buildings, is storage space to have, you know, chairs and tables and those things to be able to do those flat floor configurations. I think it'd be a great place to do meetings or do lectures.
Other comments from the council members?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I think this was a very helpful presentation in sort of, kind of making things a little more tangible. And I, so I just want to, perhaps, perhaps this is what you folks were saying, but I just want to reiterate, so there are no models that you know of where one can construct or develop a theater like this that can sustain itself, right? Like, the whole idea is that the operational costs of this cannot be sustained just by things like ticket sales or other types of small-level sponsorships. Am I understanding correctly?
Yeah, not on a nonprofit basis. I mean, there certainly, there are theaters, I mean, Lincoln Center doesn't sustain itself. Big philanthropy. Broadway does, and, you know, those are, I can't think of the name of the folks who owned half of them, but they own those theaters, and then they actually rent them to productions, and they do sustain themselves, but those are for-profit ventures, and that's what they do.
Other questions? Councilmember John Boy?
So this then is going to be nonprofit, because it's the borough that owns it?
Yes. Actually, the borough would own the property, as I understand it, but it would be, we'd have a nonprofit helping to operate the theater.
Right. Okay. Well, I just want to say I can't wait. My dream, since we've been talking about this, I've been on the council 15 years, I've always dreamed of having an Oscar event there, where we have a red carpet and the searchlights, and everyone come all dressed up and have a simulcast of the Oscars and just come out and have a great time. It's my dream.
Thank you, councilman. Other council members?
You said it was an 18-month expected timeline of construction. Does that build in, like, routine delays that often happen with commercial projects like this and residential projects?
I mean, you know, yeah, it's 21,000 square feet, and that's after the building's been demolished, but I'm pretty sure that we can build that in an 18-month period.
And that's just for the theater, right?
Just for the theater, yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to go back to that question. Chris, that wouldn't bother sitting down yet, because I got a couple...
Yeah, just to give you, to give you a sense of, so the Performing Arts Center in New Brunswick is, the Performing Arts Center component's about 67,000 square feet, and we have a 22-story tower on top of it, and we built that in 26 months?
24.
24 months.
Okay, thank you.
And then, we took an entire Saturday and closed every concrete plant north of Route 78 and poured concrete for 16 hours.
Got it. Thank you.
Can I ask another?
Yes, councilman.
I think this is a question most Metuchanites might want to know. Is it your intent to restore and use the original marquee? Or is it still in question?
It's not the original marquee. It's not the original...
Well, the one we have.
It's been understood, the one you have.
Right.
Honestly, we can, we can look at that, but I think, given the fact that the new building will be slightly bigger, is replicating it and doing kind of, you know, historical nod to it, but I think you also want to use LEDs, and you want to be able to do, you not have to have the guy climb up...
There are reasons not to.
Climb up and change the letters, and be able to use electronics and those types of things. I, this is something the mayor has, besides that, wanting to save several parts of the exterior. Took us a while to get him around to understanding, to appreciating how difficult it was. So we, he's actually helped guide us through that analysis.
You know, it's, it's a beloved center for all of us, no matter whether you've lived here, and, you know, we always hear the story about people's first kiss and the popcorn fight and the, you know, one gentleman in town always reminds me of his son's wedding that was there.
I saw Jaws there.
There you go. People have, people have stories, and those stories are memories, and those memories are important to people. And even though I haven't lived here as long as some of the people who have told me some of those stories, I also deeply connect to that theater as an iconic space on Main Street, and, you know, it's obviously as important to me as it is everyone. And we've had those moments where we sat across conference room tables years ago, where some of the realities of the disappointment were shared. You know, this is something that is an iconic structure, but you can build it the way it feels, and that's the most important. This is going to be a regeneration of something that matters to people, and the idea is that we want it to roar back, but it has to be economically sustainable. I mean, that's the most important thing for us. We can't build something that's irresponsible. You've got to build something that's paid for. You've got to build something that doesn't cost taxpayers additional municipal tax dollars. It's our responsibility as leaders who are engaged at the county and state level and federal level, well, this is, thank God, no federal dollars associated with it, to do as much as we can to bring those tax dollars back here. You know, we can do so much with your tax dollars here, our tax dollars, but it's the county and state money that we have done, if I do say so myself, with the assistance of so many partners, an extraordinary job of bringing that money back. So yes, it's taxpayer dollars, not the tax credits. Those are corporate dollars for, as an incentive to stay in New Jersey for big companies that maybe some of you work for. But, but it's the idea of that money coming back here. Doesn't go to East Brunswick, or Cranford, or, you know, Hackensack, or Newark. We're bringing that money back here. Your dollars are coming back here, and that's extraordinary. That's really extraordinary, because at the end of the day, we could say, you know, we're good, but we're advocating to bring something that will be an extraordinary help. And as I think Mr. Palladino said, as we're hinted at, it's more than just the direct result of this theater. It's the impact it will have on our community generally, frankly, and on the success of our downtown, the economic success, and the ability for you to have something to do that you might not otherwise have. Social, cultural opportunities, family events for kids, for seniors, for people who have maybe never seen a show before. Here in your town, not everyone can get to Broadway, and no, this won't have Broadway-level productions, because it's not going to be a Broadway stage with a pit. That's what you've got New Brunswick for, that's what you've got the state theater for. Apparently, my colleague in Carteret has built a Broadway-level theater there. Apparently, they have traveling shows from time to time. You can go to Carteret for that. But here in Metuchen, we could build something special for here. And that's a question I want to ask, because I want some clarity if I can. You said about this theater, and you've been in the theater business now, maybe longer than you care to admit, and I've learned a lot about this concept. You said there's no theater in America, I want to repeat what you said and make sure this is right, no theater in America that can make money just on concessions, rental fees, and ticket sales. Is that accurate?
Yeah, you know, in our kind of research, on the nonprofit side, you know, again, Broadway is a different thing, and Broadway's unique to New York. There may be a theater or two in Chicago and maybe one in Boston, but everybody depends on primarily two things. You'll find in some of the big cities that the municipal government supports them on a regular basis, but philanthropy is such a big piece of it. So, no, no, there's nobody who's, you know, your ticket sales, or your ticket surcharge, your facilities charge, or selling that much popcorn, or even if you can sell liquor, actually, you know, breaks even. So you really do need to find, to be responsible, finding a continuous revenue source that you can commit to subsidize the operations is a worthwhile venture.
So, so you said that this is special. You made a comment about this theater in the model that we have considered from an economic perspective. You said that this is special. You know, we all know there are, you know, three or, if you count the two stages, there's, you know, I guess, three or four theaters in New Brunswick. We've got Red Bank, I've been to Red Bank before, the Count Basie. We've got Carteret, there's now a new Performing Arts Center, a small one, but one in Abinell. There's a lot of theaters. I don't know if I mentioned Raway, there's one in Raway. What is special about this? Why would, why would this, why would this one succeed, when there's all these other ones around?
Well, I think, I think Metuchen's special. You know, I find, you know, in going through this process and... You know, I find, you know, and, and going through this process and, and talking to various people in the arts community is that there is some kind of, for lack of a better term, indigenous arts movement in this town and that it's a walkable place and that you already have, you know, a restaurant scene and you have a train station and, you know, how many people could within a 15-minute walk on a nice evening walk to this theater? I think you're going to have a, it's, it's funny, we were talking to the EDA and they said you had to do four events a month? Four events a month? And, you know, I kind of laughed because you can probably do 15 or 20 events a month, given what we've seen, what people say, can we do this, can we do that? It's going to be an operational issue and an organizational issue, but I just, I think, I think Metatchen is a unique place where you have a community that has artists and people who appreciate the arts and appreciate a real sense of community that it's hard to, it's hard to, you look, you and I grew up in North Brunswick, very different.
True story, by the way.
Very suburban, you know, no sense of place.
He's a little older, just a.
Yeah, much older.
Just a little bit.
But no sense of place, you know, hung out at the, at the, at the mall, at the shopping center, you know? You've got something special here. And that's one of the reasons that, you know, we were interested in kind of being part of your team.
I don't want to commit, I don't want to commit you and I, I don't want to put you on the spot and if you, and you and/or Marissa, I'm going to, well, I'm going to, if you're not comfortable answering, I really make sure, please don't, but you have been involved in particular with the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center. And Marissa, who's, you know, one of the leaders of Devco as well, who's sitting next to you, who hasn't spoken yet tonight.
But she runs it.
She does. She, she runs the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center. Devco is involved in putting it together. But I guess, I just, without a commitment, I just want to ask, is there an open mind to the idea, I, I know the answer to this, but I'd like to hear it and, and make sure the community hears it, is there an open mind to the idea of the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center working with the Forum Theater because of the, you know, the, the economies of scale, if you will, with you and existing operation in New Brunswick and we here in Metatchen are, you know, a small government with lots of wonderful volunteers, but not necessarily the ability to carry out the function that's necessary to, to execute a theater?
Yeah, look, I think, and we have a little bit of a runway here, if we put something together that makes sense for both of us, yes, simply yes. I think also there could be extraordinary support from the Middlesex County Arts Institute that helps us with programming and has an interest in programming things across the county. And now this is another venue to do that. We've talked about things that, you know, maybe the plays in the park that a lot of people go see, but doing some performances maybe, you know, here during the, during the year. So, I think we do a lot of things through collaboration and I think collaborating with Metatchen has, has some real potential.
And then back to, I'm going to move over to Halsey Street for a second. I had something that I wrote down. You know, I know that, that you're talking about a parking structure currently, the American Legion, who I spoke to a couple of weeks ago, were, were concerned about losing the parking that is in front of it. They occasionally have events that, you know, attract quite a few people, it's a huge, important revenue source for them, and I want to make sure that they are considered as, as part of this process. I just want to make sure that with whatever you end up bringing in with respect to a developer, that that's something that they'll consider, and I, I had assurances earlier today, but I'd like to hear you say it.
Well, I, the important part here is that the garage, the land's staying with the borough and the garage is going to be owned by the borough. You may decide to be the parking authority or the borough, so you're going to have that control.
Okay, that's the most important.
And I think that's a scheduling issue.
Okay.
They're going to have a wedding or some kind of graduation party or a, a baby shower to, you know, what you do is you don't allow many daily parkers in that Sunday afternoon or that Saturday evening.
But I'm going to commit here as we're talking about the importance of parking to the American Legion. I know there's some members here as well and that's, that's very important to, to us as a borough, to make sure that that revenue source remains and that the parking is, is open.
And one, and one of the things you talked about, we talked about, you know, the affordable housing component of this. We have found in New Brunswick, we worked with the Actors Fund in New York to encourage artists to be part of that affordable housing component. So, you know, when we opened up, we had a choreographer, someone who built stages, some, a ballet, several ballet dancers, musicians, you know, here, that's obviously an opportunity to, to, to bring artists into the community. We have a graphic artist who goes out and does these extraordinary chalk murals on the, we closed the street and he does it with the kids and we try to do it when it's not going to rain. But here, because of the VFW, to be able to create that partnership with veterans is another extraordinary thing to be able to, as part of building sense of community.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions from council members? Anything else that came up?
I was thinking, so I know we have an Arts Council, but not everyone who's on the, I mean, not everyone in town who has theater experience is on the Arts Council. So, will there be any, any process in place that if there are people that have theater experience who maybe, you know, there's so many people on the Arts Council, we can't have like 100 people on it, or maybe they don't have the time to be on it, but they have some expertise, will there be kind of any call for people that have expertise that, you know, you can kick around some of the nitty-gritty ideas?
Let me, let me, let me answer that question because I, I've thought about this a lot, that one, the, one of the, one of the hardest parts about a project that has so many expectations as this one has had over the years in this community is, is the concern over disappointing people who feel like they have an interest or a stake in a project that matters so much to them. So, I can just tell you that, you know, we're far along from the point where we're going to get to staffing, volunteerism, like all that stuff, but I think that particular attention by us as a borough has to be made to involving and engaging in as many groups as possible in town to keep this as truly a community space, because that's what this is. It's a community space, it's not-for-profit, it's just got to make ends meet. You know, it's got to pay for itself. It's a, I've said this before, I've compared it, it's not a trip to the grocery store, it's a vacation. You want to go on vacation if you can afford it, but you've got to be able to afford it. You can't afford it, you can't go on vacation. So, this is not like the Emergency Services Center, which we have to build. This is not like Borough Hall, right? This is a wonderful thing that some really, really want. I see a friend in the back who I know is going to smile, thumbs up, there we go, Linda. There are people in this town that this matters as much as everything else, but as a government official who wants a theater as much as, as they do, we've got to make sure we can afford it and pay for it and that it sustains itself. It's one thing to pay for that red gap that you saw in that pizza pie that was thrown up before. It's another thing to be able to sustain it once you've accounted for that $5 million. We've got to sustain this if we're going to build it. That's the most important, that's been, from day one, that's been the responsible oath that we've taken to ourselves in this process and we're going to continue on that until the day this thing is finished. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to open to the public on this and any other topic. I would just ask if someone has a topic unrelated to the theater that they wait until everyone who's had an opportunity to address the theater has come to the microphone, because obviously we want to make sure this is a contiguous discussion if possible. We know your name, but if, for the record, if you could just, if you could just say it.
My name is Walters Allen. I'm presently the commander of the American Legion Post 65 in Metatchen and have been since 2009, a member there for 43 years, a resident of this town since June 7th, 1974. The reason why I'm here is because I also represent the American Legion as Department Vice Commander and I cover Mercer, Middlesex, Monmouth, and Somerset County. And this is not the first time, I feel like this is Groundhog Day for me because I've been here for many years. In 2012, I addressed the council here on 17 questions on infrastructure before anything was built. I'm still waiting. Okay? So, I have the experience. In 2014, I was also here and addressed the council because there was a lot of false accusations made about veterans and the American Legion. And I presented a letter to the council here, mayor and council. Bringing this up to date, the present proposals impact on the American Legion property and land building and operations. Just an update, the American Legion was forced to accept its present location although several options were open. One was $1 million in cash, the second was $2 million in cash, third was $3 million in cash, which I refused, okay? And the reason why I refused is because this is a national veterans organization and there is many things that the veterans do. We are in our present location now, which we're forced to take. The present proposals will cause increased water to run off into our property and the building there are several, several storm sewers already around the property. Actually, there's 14 because one even runs underneath the building. There are also three retaining walls around the building to prevent flooding of the building, which did occur especially after the council decided that no traffic should enter on Main Street from the Main Street properties. So, the road was paved and they had to build asphalt and they had to add additional asphalt to it to prevent the water from going into the property. And there are storm sewers that anybody could go there and look. I have pictures here of the property from Main Street and it shows from Main Street the roof line. So, the ground level at Main Street is the same height as the top of our building, just to give you an idea. And then coming from the opposite side of Wernick Place, from Ambly Avenue, it's even higher than that. So, any construction around that area is going to cause an impact to the building. The other information again is about the parking. 60% of our income comes from parking, okay? And then just to give you an idea of what we do with the money, okay? First of all, the organizations we have are the American Legion's veterans, the American Legion Auxiliary, the Sons of the American Legion, American Legion's Riders Chapter, the American Legion Clara Barton, which was closed over there, Clara Barton, because they couldn't maintain it and their property was lost. So, they meet at our post. We also have the American Legion Middlesex County meets at our post. We have the Vietnam Veterans Central Jersey Chapter 233. As co-members of our post, we've been having, hosting them since 1987 when they lost their building in New Brunswick. We also have the Boy Scout Troop 14, presently 52 scouts, and this week here, our 116th Eagle Scout received his award. We also have the Women, Metatchen Edison Women's Clubs meets there, the Railroad Workers Union, United Steel Workers, Iron Workers Union, the Boy Scouts of America District Councils for the Patriots Council meets there. These are just some of the things, organizations that meet at our building. American Legion programs, we have the American Legion Oratorical Contest, which is based on the U.S. Constitution. It's a week at Rider's College. We also have Girl State, which is held at another college, which is based on the same thing, the U.S. Constitution. We also have other programs with the Safety and Essay and Poster Coloring Contest in our grammar schools. We support Mental Park Soldiers Home with bingo's outings, personal needs items, Veterans Haven North, where we have 75 veterans that would be homeless. It's run by the state in New Jersey on Sanitarium Road in Glen Gardner. We have 70 male veterans there and five female veterans there that are on there, hopefully they'll be, can stay there and, and get on their feet and they're only allowed to stay there for three years and they're taken out there for business. We also support York Carteret, an organization that is in Carteret for veterans, run by the state in New Jersey by Sharon McGreevy. And we also have Veterans Council Rooming House in Union County. We also help the duty, lower-duty ranking families on Joint Vegas Maguire. We have 600 families that we help support with food every month. We served over 675,000 meals to our veterans, our armed forces personnel and our families that can't afford it. These are things we do in the American Legion. What will happen to this post is my question.
Okay.
Where will we go?
You, so.
What else do we do as the American Legion in New Jersey? And I've been involved with it since 2012 at the state level. Hurricane Sandy, everybody remembers. Well, in Hoboken, Post 107 was wiped out. We got it rebuilt in 2019 with six apartments for veterans in need, plus the post home. 18 more units are being added on to render construction now. In South Ambly, same thing. Sandy wiped out the post. We have five apartments going to be built there. Alls we got to do is raise the money for $2.5 million. In Westfield, we just broke ground for 22 apartments.
Yep.
And I know my time is up, but there's more that I'd like to say. Thank you for your time.
Always welcome.
And that's what the American Legion does here in Metatchen.
Let me just, let me start off before answering some of your, your comments by saying how extraordinarily grateful we are for the work, the volunteerism, the efforts that you put in with our Parade Commission every year. You know, I don't know where this town would be without its volunteers at the American Legion. Obviously, Walter, you've put in a lot of time over the years. But let me just make this assurance as I did in visiting you all at your January or February meeting, right? Is it early February when I came, Rick? Right? Was it early February? So, I came to your meeting in February and I was asked, point blank there, and I'm going to say it again and I'm going to say it on recording and in front of the whole community, as long as I'm the mayor, you're going nowhere. You're going to stay in that exact spot, that property is yours and that property is yours to stay.
Pass it on.
That, 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 you know, the, the, the concern is legitimate, it's a fair concern, it's based on obviously prior dealings with the borough when most of us, I certainly wasn't the mayor and most of us were not here as council members at the time, but again, you know, your, your role in this community is safe and I want to make sure that you know that, as well as your parking. And I made sure that was clear in the conversation, the borough's going to have this, this parking garage under this theory and obviously we want to make sure that, I think you spoke and meant to say you don't get money from the parking, Walter, but you're saying you get money from party rentals and people.
Our party rentals.
Party rentals from the facility and those.
We usually get from the parking authority when we run our old property.
But the, but the, right, well, listen.
Because they rented from us.
But the, and, but the, but the bottom line is that revenue from, from events and all those wonderful events that you have there, some of which you don't even charge people for, I'm aware of that, with some of the scouts events that you do, we've had that conversation before, but we know that you do a lot of work, so we appreciate it, but your, your, your role here is safe and your ability to continue to park to host events is safe. Other members of the public? Mr. Kitsko?
Yes.
Just name and address for the record, please. Thank you. I think this microphone is, is a little louder than that one. No, that's, I think that's good. You should use that one, yeah.
Okay, I got a big mouth, so.
You do, but that's okay.
Steve Kitsko, 131 Hazelwood Avenue. Lot to say. First of all, I want to just thank Jim Constantine for, I've been listening to you for over 20 years. You do a good presentation and you explain the facts and, make sure I get it right, Palladino?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Palladino, I want to just thank you. I'm a numbers guy and project guy and this thing is always like, okay, where's this $30 million coming from? And I just thank you for explaining it all and I'm asking that the deck that you've provided would be on.
Yeah, if you could just address the, the chair, sir.
Yeah, will be on the website, but I, yes. Just want to thank him as well.
Absolutely.
And for having him. And also Jonathan, I just want to thank you, A, last, at the last meeting, you were very forthright about asking, answering my questions and just listening to you talk right now about sustainability and viability has got to be the, you sound like a Republican. There may be hope for you yet.
That I am not, but go ahead, sir.
But, anyway, I have questions, more follow-ups, just, and they're detail-oriented, so just, I mean, thank you. Last meeting, you explained that the critical path is just demolishing the Forum and building the new. the new one. That's the new theater. That's goal one and that the gas station is not a part of that critical path and that the west side of Main Street is, that's really a separate branch of, I call it the Arts District Project, not, it's not on the critical path. I just thank you for shaking your head and make sure I understood that correctly. Couple other questions, things that came up at the last meeting that I was thinking about is that the economic development grant has to be, a government entity can't receive it, so it has to be a non, a corporation, private entity, whether it be nonprofit or whatever. I'm inferring it has to be a nonprofit corporation. Question is, does it have to be a five oh one C three or like a registered charity or does it, can it just be a regular, I mean, Devco's not for.
It could be, we are a five oh one C three.
Yeah.
It could be a not-for-profit corporation organized under the New Jersey statutes.
Okay.
What I believe what we're going to do though is the.
Well, this is, that leads into my next question.
Is to create a five oh one C three because it does allow you then to solicit philanthropic contributions from individuals and corporations that can deduct it under taxes.
Let's wait for, let's wait for Mr. Kitsko to finish all your questions and then we can answer.
Okay. Yeah, so the last time you said the real deadline is to submit the application for the grant. I'm sure that's got to be public information, but I would like to, when is that deadline for it's going to be released to, like, you have to have the grant application in? And then my question then, I was thinking about it, if a government agency can't get the grant, so is this nonprofit, this five oh one C three actually submitting the grant and the borough is like giving an in-kind contribution to this nonprofit corp, this corporation to submit the grant to get the economic development money? That, that's a question and that, and then it's a, my question then is, how far along are we on the process in terms of, you know, setting up the corporate, you know? It's not rocket science to do that. I mean, I've, I'm not a lawyer and I'm, you know, and I did it, so, with the Metuchen Music Education and Development Organization. You know, it's writing the bylaws and, you know, just filing the paperwork with the state. That's easy and I'm sure you have the governor on speed dial that they can get the bureaucrats working a little, even faster. The issue on getting the five oh one C three is you're dealing with the feds and, you know, they take their good old time. So that, that's, like, you know, what's the status on that and how are we doing and will they have it in time for the deadline? I mean, obviously, that's what you're sure for.
Absolutely, not to worry.
That's really basically.
Okay.
Once that property, then, one last thing, I know Devco's project manager and all this, so will, who is like, will it be this corporation that's dealing with Devco and managing it or will it, like, the borough be doing it and then handing it off?
Okay.
Those are all my questions. I know a lot.
Well, I think there are, it's sort of like one main question. We'll, we'll, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So first of all, I want to correct one misunderstanding and it's a technical piece, but it's important because this is not a grant, it's actually their tax credits.
Oh, okay.
So it's different because it's corporate dollars.
Gotcha, gotcha.
That are paid towards taxes and then, it's just a term and I just know you appreciate technicality, so I want to make sure I explain that. The other piece is that I don't know that a date has been announced for the opening of the applications yet, but we are well far along with respect to our application, which will be ready in time for the window when the EDA puts this out. Originally, they had announced it for March fifteenth. I'm not sure that they're going to be available on March fifteenth, but, you know, our schedule is designed to get us moving.
To beware the.
Fairly quickly.
Yes.
Again, to not skip any steps because we don't do that here in Metuchen. We want to continue to be deliberative as we go, but there is a timeline here that's relatively quick for Metuchen because there's a timeline for the state and the last thing we want to do is give up our free money. I'm going to have Mr. Palladino address the question about the creation of the nonprofit, but in a nutshell, the Reader's Digest answer on that is that a nonprofit has to apply for this, but the borough will own the theater, the borough will own the land, the borough will own the land for Halsey, or continue to, the borough will own the parking garage. The idea though ultimately is for the theater itself, just for the theater itself, there would be a nonprofit that would operate the theater for a period of time. Do you want to, you want to address that, Mr. Palladino?
Okay.
I think, excuse me, first of all, creating a not-for-profit New Jersey corporation is a matter of filing the paperwork.
Yeah.
So that could be done very quickly and it's not.
Microphone, please.
It's not a condition precedent to have a five oh one C three for the application. So that, I've gotten them in six weeks or nine months. It depends on someone in St. Louis picking up the file. But the other part of the question was.
Was just the process. I mean, I think there's some, you know, Mr. Kitsko's getting stuck in some of the technical aspects, which is one of the reasons that we have Devco involved in this project because of their experience with dealing with state agencies and the EDA in particular and managing tax credit programs in particular. But he was asking about the nonprofit versus the borough and the ownership. I mean, can you give a simple answer on something that's obviously highly complicated?
Non, the nonprofit needs to be the applicant and the, and have operational, spend the money, which is important. So the tax credit equity and eventually the three million dollars will go to the not-for-profit and the not-for-profit will spend the money, most likely will have a development services agreement to kind of do the work for them. And then after that, I think it will be a collaboration between the not-for-profit, the borough, maybe the Performing Arts Center in New Brunswick, the county in the management side of this. It takes more than a village, it probably takes, and it, there's, I think there's an opportunity for some extraordinary collaboration with, with the borough kind of being at the vortex of that.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kitsko. Appreciate it. Other comments or questions from the public? Ms. Shakni?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you for doing this. This was, I learned even more than I did on the night that we were at Edgar School. I'm really excited about the idea of developing the gas station facility into a place that would accommodate community rooms and, and places for workshops and places for gatherings aside from the theater. That makes a lot of sense. But I want, my question is, the thirty thou, the thirty million dollar budget, is that the building of that included in that thirty million dollars?
No.
Or is that extra?
I'll let you ask all your questions, but the answer on that one is no. It's thirty million is just for the theater itself.
Okay, so to build that other piece is a different.
It is.
It's a whole different thing.
Yeah.
Okay. And the other thing I was going to say is, in terms of integrating other things as part of that forum center, education classes, arts education classes is a great way to draw in people and also funds. Education classes in the arts are very much in demand and I know they'd be very much in demand here in Metuchen because the Arts Council is always getting requests for that sort of thing. And it's worked in many, many other nonprofit theaters. They have theater camps in the summer, but they have children's theater classes during the, during the school year. The high school could, could use, depending on the quality of the, and the breadth of the education classes, the high school students could take advantage of it as part of their curriculum. There's a lot of possibilities for that and I just wanted to comment on that and hope that that's included in the whole plan. And, and one more thing, the parking, the parking deck. It's, I hope it will be an accommodating facility that won't be difficult to negotiate. I have ex-colleagues who are friends of mine who work in New Brunswick in the Performing Arts Center there and they have a lot of difficulty attracting matinee audiences, which are usually senior citizens, because they can't negotiate the scanning and the, and the whole parking deck thing. So I hope that the, that the parking fees would be reasonable and that, that it'd be easy to access for all different types of individuals. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. I think that's fair, especially in view of the fact with respect to the parking garage, that's not next door to the theater either. So it's, there's a bit of a distance between there and the theater. It's always been where people have parked for the forum, but it's not something that's incredibly close, so we'll have to come up with something obviously to make it feel as accessible as possible. That's number one. And number two, I mean, yes, it's always our desire, I know that we've had discussions about this before, but our desire is to try to make things as accessible to people as possible. We don't always succeed in that, it's always our attempt to try to do that and we're working on things, you know, related to parking that we'll announce at a later date that we're not ready to announce quite yet, based on conversations you and I have had specifically. But with respect to the education element, I would just say to you that, that the Board of Education Administration, and we have been in conversations about the theater and ways to involve the school district for, from, almost from the day we bought this. This is intended, as I've said, to be a community space and we're going to try to engage as much of that community as possible in the process of this, you know? But I think that that goes more to the planning element of a couple steps down the road. Right now, we're just trying to get this thing built. As my grandfather would say, when we get to that question, that's a high-class problem that we're trying to solve. But, you know, camps, schools or opportunities for, for, again, all different kinds of people to make use of this space is our intention.
Very good. Thank you.
There's a nice swath of chairs right here in the front that if anyone's looking at, not have that awkward, excuse me, please move out of the aisle, you can happily sit and clearly sit right here in the right.
Hello, everyone. Carmen Ballantyne, a resident of Metuchen since twenty nineteen and a member of the Metuchen Arts Council. And very exciting presentation, wonderful information and really excited to be a part of the, witnessing the change and being a part of it. I just have a question, you may have already kind of answered it, but I just kind of was curious, I know you've been defining it, you know, as a community space, which is very important and I'm all in agreement with that, but I was just curious in terms of, we've done a lot of events, you know, on the plaza and different things like that which attract outside communities and I was just wondering in terms of the space itself, thinking in terms of outside communities and bringing a community to come to the theater and so forth like that, is there any, any thought or any particular studies or statistics on terms of how does, how does theaters like this bring in other people to come and, to Metuchen and visit Metuchen? So like in terms of the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center, bringing in other communities. I work at a theater in Red Bank and one of my goals is always to try to bring new communities in, to introduce the theater to other communities as well because it's a wonderful space and even though it is a community space, it's something that everyone can enjoy. So I was just wondering if there was any particular thoughts about that or are there any particular information about that? And then also in terms of popularity, let's just say, you know, in terms of traffic, you know, Metuchen has gotten quite popular, even since I moved in twenty nineteen, there's been quite a big bit of a change and so I know at times, Main Street can become quite congested in terms of some of the events that are going on and I was just wondering any thoughts around that, just in terms of keeping things moving and, and accommodating all this space? So just curious.
Yeah, so good, good point. To address your community theater piece or communities coming to the theater piece, I would say to you that this is a regional space. I mean, it's certainly a Metuchens theater, the borough literally will own it, but it's a space for others. We would never, you know, even, even our downtown would never make it on just us. As much as we all think that we could just take care of our downtown, we've learned that in order for our downtown to thrive, or anything to thrive, restaurants, if you look around you, many people, when you're sitting down at, at a restaurant and you look around, are not from Metuchen and that has been the key to our success, is becoming a place where people want to come. And I know we have our executive director of our downtown alliances here, that's been part of, you know, one of their desires as an organization is to attract people here. So the theater will have very similar philosophy because it needs, I'm going to keep saying it, and you're going to get bored of me saying it, it needs to be sustainable and to sustain it economically, it's got to be active as many days or nights and nights, if possible, of the year as possible, because that's how it's going to pay for itself, which it needs to be able to do, okay? And so that's the key with all of this. We will attract people and I'm sure, again, that's part of the planning of down the road and what type of events are there. But yes, there's plenty of opportunities, including the Middlesex County, you know, for the arts and Mr. Palladino got confused on that name as well. Marissa, what's the name, Middlesex County Art Institute? The Arts Institute, they, they offer, for example, grants that they're happy to give out for programs where artists are paid and the programming is paid and they, they always, I mean, they're always talking, Lindsey Urban is the head of that organization, is always talking about with the Arts Council about ways to, to bring artists to Metuchen, right now to the library and to other places, but once we have a space for them, we can do it. But I do want to talk about the space itself because the space itself has to be available. You know, once you're in a situation where there's no vacancy because something else is going on, you may not be able to have certain events. So you start booking things and then let's say you're having wrestling on the plaza and that day it rains and you'd like to be able to bring it into the theater, but there's a concert going on, so you can't do that. So we're going to have to deal with all those high-class problems because it will have meant that we built a theater, which we've been looking to do for years, but we're not there yet, okay? The other question you said was about traffic and obviously that's a concern of ours as well. The one thing that's very important is that the original theater, the current one that exists, has four hundred and fifty seats, okay? At its maximum capacity for a concert, for example, this one will have three hundred and forty-something seats. So any traffic capacity that was produced at one time is still theoretically less or more, excuse me, than what we would have produced now as a result of a sold-out event. They came up with that number based on the space they have, but they also came up with that number, you don't want to build anything that's too big and you're in the business, so you know, right? You don't want to build anything that's too big, you want to build it just right because the more seats, the more bathrooms, the more elevators, the more price, the costlier it gets. You think thirty million is a lot? If this thing held four hundred and fifty people somehow, it would be way more than that. And Kristin is, right now, has that matrix of numbers going through his head because that's what he does and he's imagining a number that's way higher than thirty billion, for example. So we want to keep it at the right place and this is what we think based on the, the work that we've done behind the scenes, number one. And number two, on traffic in general, is an issue in Metuchen. It's always been an issue in Metuchen. It's a, it's a, it's a hub. There's pictures from the nineteen, you know, fifties and sixties of Main Street that look just like they did this afternoon, with people stuck in traffic. But, you know, I think it's important to understand that the development in Metuchen is not necessarily the responsibility of this, is not, is not responsible necessarily for this traffic. You know, one of the things we've seen, and we love our, our neighbors in Edison, but the population in Edison has tripled over the exact same period that our population has actually gone down. And so to get from one side of Edison to the other, you often go through Metuchen and you're picking people up at the train station, you know, you're, you're going out to eat, you're shopping, you're doing whatever. We're lucky that we have traffic to some degree because it means people are here and from an economic standpoint, that's good. We also get stuck in, and I get stuck in those same traffic jams that you do. On my way to pick up my kid at Myrtle Field or, you know, dropping off something that should take three minutes, I'm in my car for fifteen to twenty, getting across town. I know exactly how you feel and we do our best to address that. I do think that there are real opportunities here, especially with respect to commuter traffic, because the most important, one of the more important goals that we have is to continue to allow people who currently park in that lot, to continue to be able to park in that lot, is we might be able to help with the traffic flow a little bit when the train gets out. That causes traffic, it always has. Fifty people get off the train and get in their cars at the same time and leave and try to make a left or right onto twenty, onto Main Street, it's the same no matter what. So traffic is traffic and we'll do our best to continue to try to have it make less of an impact, but it doesn't have much to do with us. Other questions, comments from the community? Kat? Nice to see you.
Hi, I'm Kat Durnan Davis, seventy-two East Walnut Street. I had a question about the leadership structure of, I suppose, the five oh one C that would be running the forum when it becomes active? And what input, for example, if someone suggested an Oscar night with a red carpet and, and someone from the community wanted to create something kind of quirky like that or a baseball movie on baseball parade weekend or something truly community-oriented, who is sitting around the table making that decision to say, no, that's not going to make us enough money or how much would we set it if a dance, one, a dance school wanted to have their recital there? That's a problem, you have to go to. recital there? That's a problem. You have to go to town for that. Who are those decision makers?
So I, I would, is that your, is that your only question?
That's my question.
Okay. So from an operations standpoint, it's going to be something that we, that we farm out. We're not going to be making decisions on those things particularly. We're going to have input on it. Obviously, we wouldn't send it out to someone who's not a partner with us. But professionally speaking, you know, our borough administrator isn't going to be sitting at a ticket booth selling tickets to you, Kat, when you and your family are looking to see a performance.
Right.
This is going to be, there's, Woodbridge, for example, is great at, at using its community as a way, I'm not John McCormick. I'm not doing that. And this is in Woodbridge. We have a different operation. We're not going to have a miniature golf course here. Okay? This is a, this is a different operation. This is a different standard. We want our theater. We want to make sure it's run professionally and done by people who have lots of experience in this, which is why I put our friends at Devco on the spot a little bit, because I know from my relationship with them, how involved and engaged they are with the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center. And my suspicion and engage, and, and discussion with the county and Devco, is that they're going to be deeply involved in whatever operations aspect that is. And they've already invested in the ticketing software and the, the, the staff, for example, to make sure that that's done correctly and done right on their two stages, for example, in New Brunswick. I'm hoping to bring that, that, that operational, with local input, of course, that operational standard here.
So what I'm hearing is not the community?
No. What I'm saying is that there'll be community input.
Okay.
But that, you know, the decision on whether the Little League, for example, has a baseball that will be, you know, night, will be determined on whether that night is booked, for example, or what night they can fit in. It's all dependent on what we have, based on what's sustaining the theater. And I do think that what you've said are great ideas and things that will likely happen. There'll be events like that all the time there, but depends on the schedule. And you know, you're in the business. We've talked, you know, during my office hours before about this.
Right.
This is a, this is something that has to pay for itself. And so you have to be able to have
Right.
an organization that can help sustain it properly and professionally, but you also have to balance that with the community events that we need to be able to support.
Excuse me, may I, Mr. Palladino?
Yeah. Mr. Palladino?
I think what's important, and Marissa and I were talking about this afternoon, I think she probably did 360 events last year in two theaters. And we're trying to find a date now for next fall for something. We've got resident companies, which are different at the moment. At some point, you may have that. It's being organized and being able to, with as much time as possible, being able to ask for dates. I can't think of anyone who was organized and said, we want to do this, you know, three months from now, that we haven't been able to accomplish. You know, Marissa's been good at, you know, asking George Street to, to move a time or do those kinds of things for some local organizations that have been important. So it's the, it's the local organization's users of being partners and being organized and trying to get into the scheduling, because scheduling, we find, gets done pretty much 12 months in advance. But then there's dates that are just available sometime. And people come up with great ideas, and the baseball movie is a great one. So...
Okay. I just wanted some reassurance that-
If you want to do Hoosiers too, I'd come, that would be good.
Yeah, that it would not be a bunch of corporate people around the table
No, 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 no.
Making decis-, you know-
Let me, let me dispel that.
It's a town.
Yeah, and that-
Can we talk about that?
Yeah, that came up at the, at the Forum too. Not the Forum Theater, at the public forums that we had for the Forum. It's not going to be a bunch of corporate people. It's just that the type, it's going to be a really, Kat, it's going to be lots of different kinds of things. You know, somebody may have a private event once in a while, right? Somebody may, there may be a, you know, a Central Jersey Dental Convention that happens there, a private event that pays whatever the value is of an event like that. You know, there may be an opportunity, we believe, for the dance schools to, instead of having these grandparents and parents going to Montclair or Kane University to, to see their child dance, I mean, why not buy the flowers here and then go to dinner afterwards here? Those are, those, you know, those, those events are absolutely anticipated as part of the concept of what we need to do here. You know, but you have to be able to have an organized and professional business entity that knows about operations of a theater, managing staff, managing customers, and, and, and executing on sustainability. Because again, it's great to have a theater, but it's got to pay for itself, or otherwise, it comes out of our taxes. And that's been the objective from the very beginning. So that's important. But thank you for the comments. And yes, there will be opportunities for the community for sure. By law, there's got to be at least four events per year that have to be open to the public. Those are ticketed events. Those aren't free events necessarily.
Per month.
Per month, excuse me, per month, I meant to say. So that's four times 12, right? So, but that's part of the receipt of the money. So, but, but there'll be way more than that, because most of these events will be ticketed. Or not. Other comments from the community?
Good evening, all. Linda Van Der Schmietl Stara at 242 Ambly Avenue. First of all, as you can well imagine, this really warms my heart. So many months and years previously, I have been here, wondering where we were, and here we were. And yes, indeed, you were really working very hard to make this happen. And it is, it does have a wonderful future for us. The one question I have, which I'm not really clear about, there is going to be a, a parking deck related to the Forum. Am I right on that?
So to pay for, well, let me, let you finish your questions.
Well, and where is it? Where, where are you envisioning it? And will it be part of this first phase? So it's all around the parking.
Okay, great. So, so the presentation included a deck that will be part of the, the sustainable resource, which is the Halsey Street Lot. So the, the parking deck, to answer your question, would be in Halsey. Instead of the parking lot that's there now, it would be a Halsey parking deck. Okay? And then the apartments or residences at the Forum, as the planner described, would be associated with that parking deck, similar to the way Woodmont is with its parking deck. Okay? So that's, that's the first thing. The, the Halsey Lot is connected to this only in the sense that, that's always where people have parked for the Forum Theater events, at least events that were more than a couple cars that you see parked from University of Radiology right now alongside the theater's wall, right, facing the gas station. So basically speaking, we're going to continue to use that, that lot, but in a more sustainable way. There are two aspects, as the planner described, to this, to getting this project off the ground. Three. One is the application to the EDA, which, as I explained to Mr. Kitsko before in my response, we have a window for, that's just about to open, and we're going to be ready when it's open, okay, to take our shot. Number one. Number two is getting that $5 million gap, which is going to be in existence as a result of the skin in the game that the state requires us to have to get the money in the first place. So we'll have 22 million. We need 30. We have 3 million sitting in an account from when Governor Murphy awarded us the 3 million as part of a, you know, end of the June line item from the budget. We have five left. We need $5 million to be paid to us from the developer, and we need a parking garage that can give us the 500,000 to 600,000 or so dollars a year to help keep the lights on in the theater. If you build a theater, in the nonprofit world at least, we heard all about, we learned more about Broadway professional operations today than I think any of us expected. But in the nonprofit world, if you build a theater, it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't sustain itself on just tickets, facility fees, and rentals and concessions. That's not enough to sustain a theater. You need more. You need a foundation. You need a naming rights. You need, and in our case, we need a parking garage, because that money will then be attributable to, or will, will be, will, will be sent to, to hold off that line item that would otherwise require us to tax. And that's, we're not, we're not, we're not interested in doing that. We want to sustain ourselves with this theater, as I keep saying. Other comments, questions from the community? Come on up. Mr. Schleck?
Thanks so much to the, to the council and to the planner and everybody that's been a part of this visiting exercise. I, I, I think it's a tremendous, it'll be a tremendous asset to our community. It'd be, you know, it'd be tremendous. I'm also, I'm also a member, a proud member of the American Legion, so I'm sure that there's a way to balance the interests between what we're going to need as a legion and also the long-term interests of the community. So I'm sure that'll be great. When I looked at the budget, the $30 million, there's a $3 million contingency, right? So there's, there's money that may not have to be spent, right? There's like, in theory, if we come in on our budget, it's a $27 million project. It's not a $30 million project. And so that, we should keep that in mind, right? So when we talk about these, you know, envisioning this concept, I'm curious, who from the town, or how will you appoint, like, the business mind to be able to keep an eye on what's going on in terms of the construction? Secondly, and first of all, I should also mention, Devco is a tremendous asset, not just to Metatchen, but to, to our community, to, to the, to, to the county. They've been hugely impactful in building affordable housing, helping end homelessness, which is something that's very important, very important to our, to our veteran community as well, because we have too many people experiencing homelessness that are veterans. So I understand that Devco was involved in the design phase. Also, now they're also doing this project, and they're going to fill the gap, this $5 million gap, with this opportunity to build the, the parking deck as well as the, as well as the apartments. $5 million, which may actually just be $2 million if you come in on budget, right, and not have to use a contingency. So how is it that we're managing all of these interests to ensure that we're, as a community, getting the best possible deal that we can? And, you know, I, I've been involved in nonprofit management for the better part of 10 years. Nonprofit is, is tremendous, so it doesn't mean that you're also not capitalistic in terms of trying to maximize the revenue to the entity. So how do we make sure that we balance all of the interests of the community, of Devco as an important partner, and the long-term, the long-term interests of, of our budget?
So I'm going to let Mr. Palladino, if I can, answer, well, let me just answer your first question, Mr. Schleck. Are you done with your questions?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for being here. One, Devco's keeping an eye on this. You know, we hired professionals. We've been partnering with professionals, and we've been there, they've been there since day one. I mean, as soon as we acquired this theater, we had a meeting with them. You know, they've got, they've got big fish that they're working on. They're working on the Cancer Center in New Brunswick, the Helix. These are big projects. This is a smaller project, but I like to bust their chops a little bit, that they're having more fun with our project than anything else they're working on, because they appreciate the, the community members and, and the work that we're doing here. But, but in all seriousness, they are really, they, they have incredible experience at leveraging what you're describing, to make sure that all of the, the specialized knowledge that's required in the nonprofit world, for-profit world, government subsidy aspect is all sort of partnered together and brought out to, to maximize what's, what's best for us. This is why we really, it was crucially important for them to be at that public forum, because we wanted to make sure that they met the community, understood what people were concerned about. And then, you know, obviously, they had some ideas of where this could potentially happen and how it could happen, but they needed to tailor those based on the community, which is what's happened tonight with this presentation. And I'm certainly grateful for that. But I would like Mr. Palladino to address your question about the $3 million, you know-
Contingency.
-contingency that you described, as well as how you account for maximizing someone? And how do you know that one party won't give us more, for example, even though we're, you know, doing this for government and for, for the public? How do you maximize the, the earnings, if you will, the, the return, if you will, on, on all of this? Mr. Palladino?
Well, frame your mouth to God's ears that we don't have to use a contingency. And give it, in a, in a, in a very, I think actually, the, the ability to buy at this job is going to improve, given the uncertainty. I always find in the nonprofit center, that we're kind of countercyclical, because we're doing more work when the economy's not doing real well. You know, we're going to have to try to not buy things from Canada and Mexico, because that's going to become more expensive immediately. In a perfect world, whatever is left in this contingency will stay with the theater as a contingency for them from an operational standpoint. But to give you a little example of what we do, every contract, is it $25,000? Every contract over $25,000, years ago, we started doing this, and it was a process, because we have done a lot of public-private partnerships, either with Rutgers, or Stockton, or the hospital system, or the school board, or the county government, or the state government. We've adopted a really very aggressive bidding process. So what we will do is every contract, subcontract over $25,000, we will bid with the hope of getting at least six bids for that. We will provide a list to the borough of who we expect, who we want to bid. We will publicly put on our website that we're going to pre-qualify people to bid, to try to get the best price. We like to share them with our clients to see if there's somebody they've had a problem with in the past, or that they recommend local people to be part of the bidding process. So the thought is to get, to be very as efficient as possible. I'll also tell you, given that how quickly this, how, how, how price-sensitive this project is, we're not going to get paid a developer's fee to do this. You know, usually we get paid 3% and we do it. This is one of those things that, because the way the budget is, is that we're just going to do it for whatever overhead we need to do, and kind of keep all of that in. Maybe we'll have the concession stand named after us or something. But, you know, it really through, really kind of competitively bidding this very aggressively, using a local, as many local contractors as possible. You know, obviously, any oversight the 501(c)(3) or the borough wants to put, we will, we will do what we do with our other clients. When we open the bids, we'll show them all, and we'll say who we're going to select and why we're going to select them. We not, have not always picked the, the lowest bid, because that's not sometimes the lowest responsive bid. But, you know, we're going to just try to wring every bit of value out of this as we can.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate that. I wonder too, like, in terms of filling that $5 million airball, would we consider going to bid for that? Like, if we were to design the specs for what we think could be done there, would we just maybe put that out and let somebody else give us a, a price for what they would, what they would pay for the rights to do that?
Well, the $5 million is going to come from somebody who is going to build the other project. So that's really going to be, I mean, look, we're, we're really kind of pushing the envelope, because, you know, I think the value of what the borough gets from this is not $5 million. It's probably in excess of $20 million. So, you know, that's-
How much is, how much is a parking garage of the si, of the size that we would need? What is the cost for a parking, if the borough were to build its own parking?
Somewhere between 13 and 15 million dollars.
So we're, so the idea here is that we need someone to build us a parking garage, and we need $5 million from them. We need the garage so we can get sustainable income. And number two, we need $5 million to bridge the, the remainder of the money. So we're looking for a, let's say it's 13. We're looking for an $18 million gift from someone, not a gift, but a purchase. Just by comparison, Woodmont, how, I, I don't know if our planners know this, how much was Woodmont for, I mean, this is how many acres? How, how big is this space?
About 600, 60,000 square feet. So an acre and a half.
So, so Halsey's about an acre and a half. Woodmont, which was a purchase, the borough would still own the Halsey Lot. And obviously, the, but we'd give somebody the right through this money to, to, to build on it. But Mr. Mr., Mr. Constantine, do you know, do you remember how much that was?
I don't, but it was almost five acres, a three times, more than three times the size.
Okay. So the Pearl Street parking lot was more than three times the size. So it's five acres versus one and a half. Do you know the answer to that question?
I think it was 7.1.
Okay. So, so I know it was in 2008?
Eight-ish.
14?
Oh, it was 14.
2014.
Right. It's probably almost doubled on a per-square-foot basis since then.
Well, I will say so. First of all, so the, so Woodmont, Woodmont bought that property. The only thing that belongs publicly to this, to the county, and that's the, excuse me, the borough, because it's green acres, right, is, is the, is the plaza.
Mm-hmm.
But the, but the rest of the entire, the entire property on Woodmont was purchased by Woodmont for 7.5 million dollars, and that's five acres. So what Mr. Palladino is trying to get for us is the value of one and a half acres that we would still own of essentially 18 to 20 million dollars, which is tremendous, which would be a fabulous deal for this borough if we could pull this off. And the answer is, we can pull this off, because we've got Devco involved, and we have some assurances already that there are people who are willing to do this. So that's incredibly important, which is how we're confident enough to be able to bring this concept together, because otherwise, we would just be presenting a pipe dream.
It's, it's a brilliant concept, right? I don't, I don't want to sound anything other than supportive of it. It's a brilliant, brilliant concept. It'll be wonderful for this community. The devil's in the details.
Right.
And we have to understand where interests lie, right? And how do we make sure that the borough's interests are protected? Like, who, like, hiring Devco to do this project is great for Devco, and I think they have, without question, the public interest in mind. question, the public interest in mind, but who's going to be really, who's going to be watching the details for the borough?
The borough is going, we are, I am administrator of the council, we're going to be watching the details on this, working with Devco, who we trust, but you always verify with anybody you work with, of course. Devco's going to be managing the project, working closely with us, and then, obviously, they will be fulfilling our, they are the construction manager, essentially, on this job, once we get to that point.
Yeah, and the other thing that's important to understand, and I think your council's probably here, we'd be designated as the redeveloper, there'll be a redevelopment agreement, there'll be contractual responsibilities within the redevelopment agreement, and we'll have a development services agreement with the not-for-profit to do the work. So, contractually, we have all kinds of belts and suspenders. I assume someone reads the contract and negotiates the contract on the side of the borough and of the not-for-profit. But the redevelopment agreement is really key, and it does usually give the municipality all types of oversight, benchmarks that need to be made, and the ability to cancel it and claw it back if they're not.
That's right.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, for your time.
Good questions, Mr. Schley. Yes, see more hands? Absolutely. Again, these chairs are waiting for people to sit in the front row, so that if they're ready, if you're ready to speak, not necessarily right away, but at some point, feel free to sit in this front row so you can get to the microphone as quickly as you're able.
Lynn Mueller, 110 Crystal Street, Metatchen. When do we have an expected date, demolition date to start of the forum?
So, my, our borough administrator is going to kick me so hard on this table if we commit to a timeline right now, but I've said to you publicly, still do it anyway, it's okay, if my leg is bruised later, I'll deal with it. We hope to have this thing done by 2027. I don't know exactly when, you know, I've said that publicly before, you know, the timeline that the state has given us to submit, to get this together, is tight, so it's different than other projects. So, you know, Metatchen has its own way of doing things, and we tend to be very deliberative, but we're going to be deliberative on a more expedited schedule here, and our, my expectation is that early part of next year, we should be ready to go.
Okay. And you mentioned that a nonprofit organization will be running the theater. Will that be Devco, or will you set up your, will the borough set up its own nonprofit?
The borough will be setting up its own nonprofit, that will be, you know, very small initially, to make sure that we get this thing built, and then we'll deal with the other details later. The most important thing is to comply with the statute, which requires a nonprofit to do this on behalf of the community effort that the statute anticipates, which, again, has been mentioned that we helped craft in the first place, and it's not having benefits just here in Metatchen, but there's plenty of projects that all of us, as New Jersey residents, are going to get a lot of advantage out of, as a result of this incredible amount of money that's available for cultural and arts projects just like this.
So, how will members of the nonprofit be chosen?
I would say that it's going to be probably done in the next couple of weeks, and as we're working with Devco and the borough, we'll just identify a couple people that'll be on it. I don't know exactly who that is yet, but it will probably be a small, like a three-to-five member group. But, again, the purpose of that is to make sure that the application is proper, and that group votes on, you know, votes, if you will, on exactly submitting this on behalf of this nonprofit, this entity, but this entity will be put together, and then it'll be, you know, sending this off on behalf of the borough.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, of course. Hi.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Humming, and I live on Amboy Avenue. I have two questions. One about the nonprofit that's going to be running it. Will there be liaisons from the town pointed to that nonprofit? So, I mean, I don't know where these nonprofit people are coming from.
I, yes.
So that they should, there should be representatives.
I got your question, I'm writing your questions down. Give me your next question, or if you have more than that, that's fine, but just give me all your questions, and then we'll answer at the end.
Oh, my other question is about the housing. Where is this housing going to be? Is it going to be on Jessup's property? Is that all land going to be?
On what property?
Jessup's.
Oh, no, no, okay, yeah, yeah.
Jessup. Is it going to be like on that? Where are you planning on putting these houses? I mean, I should, I would hope there'd be townhouses, not like six-story rentals, you know, that are going up. So, my question is, you know...
Yes.
Where are you going to find the space for the housing?
Okay.
And what about the people who already live in the area, or the businesses? What's going to happen to them?
Fair questions. Okay, good question. Those are your questions?
Yeah, those are, okay.
Thank you, Carolyn. So, the first one is, yeah, I mean, let's, you bet your bottom dollar that they will make sure that the people who are part of this are working in close tandem to the borough, okay? The liaisons, you know, let's just say that, I imagine a couple borough officials themselves would be on this nonprofit, to make sure that the idea of working together is the paramount piece of the whole nonprofit, number one. Number two, again, the purpose of the nonprofit is, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the nonprofit today, because of the statutory requirements, but the nonprofit is, overall, right now, is being created for the limited purpose of providing this application, and then operating or contracting eventually, hopefully, with a professional organization that can carry out the business aspects of a theater. And the second question, the next question you asked was about the apartments. So, the answer is, the space for the apartments, as I've said, is going to be in the Halsey lot, when I identified. The Halsey lot will be the parking garage and apartments. There was, there's also been a comment that was made, based on some of the feedback that we got at the public sessions, that there was some desire, there's been a lot of desire, actually, to have some for-purchase units in this community, and I'm happy to say that we've had some progress in that regard. One of the reasons that there are so many apartments and not-for-purchase condominiums that have been constructed over the last, not just Metatchen, but across the United States, over the last 10 to 15 years, is because developers, as I've learned, aren't necessarily doing things with just their own money. They are the initiators or majority owners of various projects, but there's others who are involved as well. And the market on apartments is very vibrant right now, as opposed to the market on condominium development. It's very different. And so, apartments ends up driving the ability to get projects like these done, as a result. That being said, there is an opportunity for potential townhomes to be constructed as part of this, you know, development. And also, we had a lot of feedback on two things. One, we had feedback on the ability to potentially have some units for purchase, number one, which I think we're hoping to be able to accomplish, which would be really great, to be able to incorporate that feedback. But also, you know, I understand that, you know, you may have some concerns about, you know, the height of apartments. Number one, there is the, you know, when you look, as Walter mentioned earlier in his comments, the property does slope down. If you're up at the cemetery, you know the property, as you're driving by, slopes down. So, some of the height, you really, you know, it's sort of incorporated into that, number one. But number two, you don't really have a choice. You want to make them look nice, you want to make sure that it incorporates your goals and objectives, but apartments are an opportunity for us to accomplish more goals than just the $5 million gap. The apartments give us an opportunity to host some of our, you know, or accomplish some of the affordable housing obligations that we have, but also moral obligations that we have. You know, the idea of making preference for veterans, if we can, that's something that's important to us as a borough, and I know to a lot of neighbors here. And also, the idea of providing supportive housing to adults with disabilities, that's something we've heard from a lot of members of the community. We heard that feedback those nights in January as well. So, if we can accomplish some of those goals, which are separate from this project altogether, but do that, and, you know, build something that's, you know, not as big as Woodmont, or at Galton, which we've had, you know, obviously, feedback on as well, and still get that $5 million, that's a real accomplishment for us, because we'll get our theater built. So, I hope that answers your question.
Right, because, I mean, you hear of so many, also the younger people who want to live in Metatchen, they can't afford it. They go to Jeff Park, and they buy in Jeff Park, because it's not expensive, until they have enough money to buy a house, because they prefer to have a house in town, as compared to a development like the Jeff Park, or Woodmont, or any of these other places. So, I'm just saying that, you know...
I understand, and that's one of the reasons why the affordable piece is so important to us, but I'll just say to you, have you looked at the prices at Jeff Park lately? Have you looked at the prices at Jefferson Park lately?
How much are they now?
They're very valuable. Go home and check out Zillow, and you'll see what I'm saying. So, the bottom line is, there's also...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, Carolyn, thank you. There's a, there's a, there is this, like, in America in general, there is a lack of housing. We could have an entire discussion about the housing issue in the United States right now, but housing is a major, there's a major shortage of housing. And not everyone can purchase a home. That whole American dream of concept of homeownership doesn't necessarily exist like it once did, and that's unfortunate for some people. For other people, we're perfectly fine with it. And rental homes and renters are just as valuable a part of our community as people who buy their homes. And so, you know, there's lots of people who choose these days to say, I'm going to use my money for something else, and I'm going to rent, and that's fine. And some people rent homes in our community, and some people rent apartments, and some people buy condos, like I did when I first moved to Metatchen in 2005. My family and I could only afford, you know, a condominium at the time, and we moved there. This is, this is a, you know, an age-old problem that's getting worse by the day, and we're doing our best to do our part to resolve it. And, you know, this is, again, we can accomplish other objectives besides building a theater in the process of sustaining our theater and getting it built. Other comments and questions from the community?
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Never met you before.
Veterans, thank you for your support in the work that you continue to do. My name is Dawn Mackey, and I'm the Executive Director of the Metatchen Downtown Alliance. I'm also a Main Street America Revitalization Professional, and I'm one of the founding board members of another 100-year-old theater, the Rialto in Westfield. The purpose of a special improvement district is to stimulate the social, historical, cultural, and economic vitality of the downtown. This project aligns perfectly with our mission and the strategy to energize and sustain a healthy district. And I'm here to publicly, enthusiastically, and unequivocally offer the support of the Metatchen Alliance. My first week here, I think it was day two, I needed to know who had the keys to the forum. It's that important. A local theater is intrinsically important to the members of its community. It acts as a beacon to visitors, serves to brand the town as a cultural hub, and drives shoppers and diners into our existing shops and restaurants. A local theater has the unique ability to enliven the district during typical slow periods and introduce prospective new residents. A colleague in Milburn states, "The Paper Mill Playhouse is the single most significant driver of the economy, one that touches every single business in every season." This is what the forum can do from Metatchen. The construction of these additional residences will deliver critical built-in consumers that will ensure that the businesses that have already invested in our district will continue to thrive. And a thriving downtown is essential to the borough at large. The MDA looks forward to being a collaborative and cooperative partner in the realization of this exciting and pivotal project. Thank you all.
Thank you. Now, I appreciate even more when our Executive Director tells me I'm long-winded, very efficient. Any other comments from the community? Back for more, Ms. Schakne? Okay.
I just wondered, we've seen pictures of the model so far, but will we be able to see the final layout before it starts construction? To see what exactly, where all the office spaces...
I would think so. I, you know, again, we've got no, you know, there's no roadmap for this. We're all doing this for the first time here. I mean, Devco does this stuff all the time, so I would say there'll be, you know, plenty of opportunities. I'm posting on social media, I know the borough is, on the borough website, we're going to have information and updates as well as we move along, but yeah, there'll be plenty of opportunities to interact with this, especially on the art, I mean, the Arts Council will be engaged in this. I know that you're technically a former Chair of the Arts Council recently, but I know you're involved with Friends of the Arts, and the Arts Council meetings are for the public as well.
Yeah, I was just thinking of things like a catering kitchen would be important.
Yeah, there will not be a catering kitchen inside of the theater, because we don't have the space for it with what we have to do, but there would be a, I think we have plans for the concept of a warming kitchen, with the idea that there would be a kitchen on the adjacent property, because whoever has the restaurant rights for that property would also have the catering rights for the facility, and it would be like a dual kitchen that would be able to serve events at the theater, as well as the restaurant, bar, or whatever, you know, we end up doing there. So, I'll just share with you that, you know, we have all those things in mind, because the idea is to make this a full-service facility for events and opportunities.
Very good. And also, I just want to say that Metatchen is more than just the downtown. Metatchen is a whole community, so it's important to support the downtown and the businesses, and I think we do a pretty good job of that. But to keep in mind, especially for a facility like this, that it's for the entire community, it's not just for the downtown. The whole community will benefit from it.
Yeah, I absolutely agree that Metatchen is many parts, the downtown being the nucleus, of course, of our town. And when the downtown thrives, which will include the theater, which would help the downtown thrive, our whole community thrives. And I think, you know, again, not referencing Zillow too often, but anybody who does own a home, and maybe that's, you know, something that we have to, you know, as residents, we take, be mindful of, that you look at your house values over the last couple of years, you'll see a tremendous increase in those values, which makes it harder for new people to move in as a result. But for you personally, you know that the success of the downtown is closely linked with the values of the rest of the town.
But it also seems that with the increase in housing prices, the taxes go up.
Well, that's a separate question and a separate issue, but that's a problem, that's a problem across...
I never quite understood how that works.
That's true. We could go through the economics. We had a Finance Committee meeting on Friday, that I know our council members, you know, asked those same questions. This is not easy stuff.
Right.
It's about maintaining services, and the cost of everything continues to go up, but they'd go up more, as I understand it, if there wasn't more of the success. But thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Comments, questions from the community? Ms. Zimmerman?
Hi, Jen Zimmerman, 54 Myrtle Avenue. I've been following this project since sort of the beginning. I went to the Town Hall in January. I was just so impressed with how the mayor, how Devco, how everyone has come together to inform the public about what this project means for our town, what the possibilities are, how transparent you've been in this whole process. I found that really interesting and informative. I want to take a minute to say, too, that this is a win for Metatchen, this is a win for South Maine, because those of us who live across South Maine, you know, there's not a whole lot we can walk to. We got, we have Seville, which we love, L&amp;L, which we love, but there's not a lot that we can walk to. So, to be able to take my kids from my house and walk to a theater, now, I grew up in New Brunswick, I could not walk to the State Theater as a kid, it's not that close. So, to be able to take my kids and walk to a theater, a world-class theater, it's an incredible win, and we're so excited. I just want to say thank you for your time and transparency, and your really thoughtfulness throughout this whole process of making sure that we, as residents, understand the levers you have to pull, and the creativity you have to bring to the table to make this happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Flaherty, was that your hand in the back?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up.
Some more questions about the theater?
Are we done with theater? Are you moving on to other topics now?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the theater? Thank you for observing that, I appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay. We're done with the theater, and now we're going to speak about any other matters, like whatever it is that Mr. Flaherty is about to raise.
Thank you. Mark Flaherty, 44 New York Avenue. So, this is a continuation of the discussion we've had over the past couple meetings about the borough responding to actions from the administration in DC. And at the last meeting, Mayor, you mentioned that there's five projects, at least, that are in jeopardy for being cut from federal funding. So, you mentioned the Main Street pedestrian grant, bike lanes, Edgar Middle School parking lot. What were the other two, or the more, and how are they being handled now? Are they being delayed, or are the scopes being cut back? Are we moving funds between different items? If so, how much and from where? And/or are we having to increase taxes to cover a gap? That's it.
Okay, is that, does that...
Yeah, that's the question.
That's all you're saying today?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, each time you come up to the microphone, you want to find out and inquire about my reaction to the President's administration, and I appreciate your perseverance, but I'm going to reiterate much of what I have said all along, which is that this borough is focused on this borough, and making sure that the projects that we have in the pipeline, like the Forum Theater, for example, like the pedestrian, you know, project, the 900 like the Forum Theater, for example, like the pedestrian, you know, project, the $9.3 million pedestrian project gets completed, you know, there are, there are five altogether. There's $900,000 that's been attributed to the Edgar Middle School parking lot, the parking lot for those kids that were, the school for those kids who were sitting in the front two rows earlier today. And there's one other that I'm just not remembering off the top of my head, but there are five projects, as I remember. The President and his administration have already had this executive order tied up in court, so there is currently, I guess, no actual threat to that money. The projects continue, as far as I know, to move forward. There would not be any moving around of money if the project stopped. This is a theoretical question, but, you know, we are going to fight to make sure that the expectations of this community are fulfilled, that our community is supporting one another. And there's, you know, I think it's fair, and it's to acknowledge that there's a lot of anxiety because of a lot of saber rattling out of Washington. And we're just going to do our best to practice localism, to focus on the things we can control, like filling, you know, a pothole here and there when we need to, like picking up garbage on time, like making sure in the school district side that the families who need IPs are getting them when they should, like your neighbor who needs some support or a couple extra bucks because they're having a hard time at their job or not, you know, losing their job. I mean, this is like, this, in real life here in Matouchin, we're going to do our best to support each other and to provide for each other and to practice localism. And what goes on at the circus in Washington right now, that's not my problem. Thank you.
So just, if there are any budget issues, you'll raise them...
There are not budget issues.
Yeah, there are not.
There are no budget concerns. Thank you. Any other questions for the public? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on with the Borough Council Meeting Minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Borough Council Meeting Minutes of January 13th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Joel.
Yeah, I abstain.
We have an abstention from Councilman Branch.
Thank you, Jason.
You got it. I make a motion to approve Borough Council Meeting Minutes of January 27th, 2025.
Has been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain, Mayor.
Okay, abstention from Mr. Candell.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Communications Consent Agenda Items A through D.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ordinance, public hearing.
Ms. Zuban, would you please read Ordinance 2025-04 by title only?
Ordinance 2025-04, ordinance amending Chapter 37 of the Code of the Borough of Matouchin entitled Police Department to amend the composition of the Police Department and the promotional and appointment process.
Council President?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Public hearing on it?
You're asking the clerk to read, she just read the title. You read the title and it's me. I'm sorry, it's always me. God, Jesus. We're opening public comment right now on Ordinance 2025-04. I don't want to, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Can you just, our Borough Administrator described, this is the ordinance for, for the Police Department?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is an important one. We have our chief here, I know, but this is a, this is a critical ordinance that we're adopting. We're excited to get into more detail with it in the community in the days to come, but our council, our Borough Administrator is going to say something.
Yeah, so with the, the chief had come to us to talk about, you know, traffic is an issue as brought up here this evening, and one of the recommendations in order to get a better or improve and try and make the most of circulation, traffic, pedestrian safety was to create another sergeant's position. And what we will do, it also helps for the morale within the department and also helps for some movement. We will create, there's going to be a sergeant's test and the current complement of officers will test for this position. There will be interviews. And then with that, the chief will then add his traffic and safety, traffic and pedestrian safety force to the Police Department. I don't know, Chief, did I get it all?
You got it all.
Okay.
I think the mayor wants a name, we'll talk...
We're going to come up with a name. Yeah, it'll be a cool name as opposed to some of the acronyms we hear around the country these days. It'll be a cool name, we'll find what that name is, but...
Star Wars related?
Nothing Star Wars related, Councilman, no.
Okay.
Jeez. Anyway, it's been a long night for, for Matouchin at least. This is like regular half of my school board meetings. Anything else outside of Matouchin, of course? Anything else from anyone on that?
Yeah, I would just like to say, as Lee is on the traffic and transportation, we're really excited about this change, potential change that we're voting on here tonight. And, you know, we've been working with the chief's, you know, traffic contingent so far, but to have an actual unit in place is something that we've been kind of dreaming about for a while, so I'm really excited to get this vote on.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so we had the motion, we had the second, we had the, we had the opening, sorry, we had the opening of the hearing, and now we have a motion to, someone has to make a motion to pass.
I would like to make a motion to pass Ordinance 2025-04 on second reading and published according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. Ms. Zuban?
Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jethwani?
Yes.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, awesome. Council President?
Ms. Zuban, would you please read Ordinance 2025-05 by title only?
Ordinance 2025-05, ordinance to amend the code of the Borough of Matouchin, various chapters to amend application, license, and permit fees, pool fees.
Okay.
I move that Ordinance 2025-05 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing set down for Monday, March 24th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. Ms. Zuban?
Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jethwani?
Yes.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, reporting the Borough Administrator?
Nothing at this time.
All right, let's see how we do reports here. Council President Delia?
Just really quickly, Mayor, the NJTPA, which is the North Jersey Transportation, whatever P stands for, Authority, is...
Planning, it's planning.
Planning Authority, there you go. It's conducting a...
So many acronyms.
Exactly. They're conducting a survey right now for updating the transportation systems or long-term objectives, and they've asked us to mention it to the community. We've also put it up on the Borough website. It's right on the homepage if you go there. It's a very, very quick survey. I took it the other day. It's maybe all of three to five minutes or so, and it's all about, you know, how you move about the, you know, the state, walking, biking, driving. They're trying to get all kinds of information, so if you can, it's really valuable if you fill that survey out. And again, it's on the Borough's website, and that's my report.
Excellent. Councilmember Candell?
Yep, just briefly about the Pool Commission, although it seems crazy to talk about the Pool with the winter we've had. Early registration will be opening in less than a month from now, I believe. A couple of weeks ago, I met with Ms. Pearlstein, Ms. Cutbert, and the Recreation Director, Brianne, to discuss the proposed budget and membership rates, which I believe are going to be presented tonight in the form of ordinance. All right, isn't it on the calendar, on the agenda?
Yes.
Yep. And then we met in a special meeting of the Pool Commission that Chair Dan Hirsch called for. All of the members of the Commission were in favor of the proposed membership rates, which are reflected in the ordinance that will be presented tonight. I just want to thank everybody for working collaboratively to make sure the Pool remains affordable, but also does not operate at a deficit. And again, I urge anybody who's interested in becoming a member of the Pool this season to register early to take advantage of the reduced rates. That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Councilmember, Councilmember Hyman? No, sorry, Councilmember Jethwani, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a very short update. I wanted to just mention that regarding the library, throughout the past month, we've had, the library has held several focus groups and a Town Hall with various stakeholders to provide information for the strategic planning effort. And I want to thank all of you who have been involved in any way, responding to the survey or attending any of these focus groups. The feedback is being analyzed to develop the strategic plan, and the drafting of that plan will happen in the next two months and then be released to, more broadly, to the community. Also, just to note that the library's annual Makers' Day is coming up Saturday, March 22nd, from 1:30 to 4:00, and I encourage those who are interested to check out the library website for further details. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hyman?
The Parade Committee is excited that the Boy Scouts are interested in honoring the residents who have served our country. The theme this year for the Memorial Day Parade will be hometown heroes. We're hiring entertainers. We have ragtimers confirmed and some of the entertainers that we had at the holiday parade, so that's exciting. And they're working on updating the staging on the Halsey Lot, which is interesting, we've talked quite a bit about that tonight. And the poster contest has started with the elementary schools in town. Just remember, we'd love for your group to get involved, so watch for, listen for, and watch and listen for opportunities to sign up to be part of the parade. The next meeting for the Parade Committee is March 18th at 7:15. CARES Committee, the next meeting, is Thursday, March 13th at 7:15. And the Board of Health, next meeting, is Wednesday, March 12th at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Janboi?
Okay, so the Environmental Commission is going to be meeting March 19th at 7:00 PM. They're still deciding on a little thing they're going to do for Earth Day. There's other events coming up, but they'll be at the next meeting, I'll talk about them. The seniors are going to be meeting Wednesday, March 5th, in a couple of days, 4:00 PM at the Senior Center. It's a makeup from a snow day. And also, the Shade Tree Commission will be meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, at 7:00 PM. And please don't forget to support the First Presbyterian Food Bank, whatever you can donate, meats, canned fruits, personal items, whatever you can, please do, and that's my report.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Branch?
Yes, I owe you spam, right?
Yes, you do. You owe me some spam.
Okay, cool, cool. All right, one update, reminder to sign up for the Sweetheart Dance through the Red Commission. That is my report.
Wow. All right, and I just give a real quick report. I spoke to the development, the head of the development at the Klein Project on Galton, which is moving along incredibly. It's interesting, you know, we've talked about a lot of these projects and how they impact our community, but, you know, we're looking now at a, our largest park in Matouchin, 32 acres, which is scheduled to open sometime in 2026, which is really incredible that you're going to have a 32-acre park in your town that you can hike, bike, walk on boardwalk trails and birdwatching towers. And Jim Constantine's here, he knows, and Chris Cessens has worked really hard on this as our planners. We're really excited about this because it's really a transformation. It'll be the largest park in Matouchin, it'll be here for generations. And the development that's supporting that is coming along quite nicely. They're going to start renting those units at the fourth quarter of 2025, and they should be starting to have people moving in in the first quarter of 2026. So some real exciting, you know, development, no pun intended, there, just really getting excited for this park to open and the work that everybody's put into this. And we're going to be taking a tour, some of the council members were available on Thursday morning of the, of the new, of the new building and of the wildlife property, so we're excited about that and looking forward to, you know, that. You know, it's interesting because we've been looking back since we're in the mood to figure out development and we've been looking at this. You know, there are demographers reports, there's a reason why demographers have jobs, because they tend to be right. If they weren't correct as experts, they wouldn't be hired in the next town or for the next project.